Okay, well, we'll have you back.
Okay.
So whenever you guys want to start, you can go ahead and do so.
Let me get my pad ready and I'll be ready in a second.
Alright.
Okay.
Leanne, I'm just gonna switch the host over to you, just in case you need to do anything. I imagine you won't have to. But just so you have some controls if anything happens.
Okay.
Um, but I don't think you're gonna need to do anything. Cause you guys are all recorded, so you could just have your meeting and then just end it when you're done.
Okay. I thank you so much.
No problem. Have a good meeting.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi.
Hello there. Are you really there?
I'm really here.
Hi Juliette.
Hi.
You're not coming through right.
Hear me now?
A little better.
Is that better?
Yes, that's better. That's better.
Oh great. I have to put the phone like underneath my chin.
Alright. At least you can. I wouldn't have room.
It would hold my phone if I could do it that way, but... Okay.
Okay, we'll bring the meeting to honor at 5:33. Those present, Counselor Parker, Counselor Baumgartner, and Leanne Aubrey. All present.
It sounds like the dream team to me.
I think so. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting?
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any corrections? Everyone in favor?
Yes.
So moved. Okay, new business. Town Council Rules and Procedure Changes.
Okay.
Now, Counselor Parker was kind enough to type this for us so that we could see the changes very easily.
I actually have some more that I'm hoping I can email you, email them to you right now. I was trying to put in reasons. I put in an extra section under our rules of, for debate. Under Section 8. Rules of...
Rules in your council.
Rules of order. Okay, can you hear me? This is gonna be a rough night if it's like this all night.
Yeah.
I, under Rules of Order, Section 8.
Um, Section 8?
Yes.
Um, yeah?
I added a section.
Put that phone under your chin.
We have E as limits of debate. You know where E, limits of debate is?
Um...
It would be like page 6.
Okay, but you gotta, you gotta back up a minute because we lost you when you were starting what you were saying.
Under Rules of Order, I added a section. It's gonna be F. And it's gonna be decorum in debate. And it's from Robert's Rules, the new, newly revised version. And it's gonna be after limits of debate. I figured, at least it's in there. I didn't want to move everything too far off. Unless you want me to put it after Section D of debate and then limits of debate.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm sorry. I've lost you just enough that I can't...
Debate. I wasn't sure how, what, send it to you what I have.
Juliette, I'm sorry. You've got all... Can you hear me?
Hello? Hold on one second. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, but you're very much into the clean water.
Um... It's second, let me try to log in. I'm gonna log out and then log back in.
Alright. You still there Andre?
I am here. I am here. I am. Counselor Aubrey.
I have no idea. I'm sorry, Counselor Burt Baumgartner.
I just want to follow the rules, you know? Hey, we are the rules committee.
Okay, but I didn't, I lost what she was talking about.
Uh, I, but you know, I had talked to her earlier about some of these changes she had talked about. I think she wanted to talk about decorum and, and I'm, you know, she, she put in a lot of work in the last couple of weeks, you know, suggesting those final changes, so I, you know, I trust her judgment on this.
Oh, I do, I do too, but she seemed to want to add something. Under Communications, I think.
And I also think decorum. But I'll allow her to speak for herself.
Okay.
Did you vote?
I certainly did.
I was the line. Non-existent.
What'd you feel about his selection for a running mate?
I thought it was phenomenal.
I did.
I thought it was phenomenal.
That woman is something else. She really, really does. Yep.
I, I think he sealed the deal today, buddy. I'm not taking anything for granted.
I don't, I don't either. You know, we've got a terrible person that we're trying, we're trying to do things correctly and he's just trying to do everything wrong. So you don't know, but I, I think that that should speak to a lot of people.
Absolutely. And she's inspiring. And she is absolutely brilliant and she's experienced. You know, I love that she has that experience, you know, as an Attorney General and a Senator. Phenomenal.
Yep. I bet you end up working for her.
That'd be, that'd be pretty neat.
Well, I, I, for some reason, I can see you two together in some aspect. Then you'll say, "Leanne?" "Leanne who?"
I said, I'll say, "Leanne," said it first. She, she believed in me when no one else was.
I do. I do. Um, all those want to have a five-minute recess?
Are we, are we gonna do a five-minute recess, Leanne? Alright, I think that's smart. Okay. Alright.
I don't know how. Oh. I think I got you now. I put you as participant.
Yay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Hey, Leanne, can you hear me? And Juliette, I tried. Is Juliette on the call? She's trying to get in. She just sent me a...
I'm in, I'm in.
Okay, I just tried calling you back and then my phone just went crazy and it shut down all the apps. I, I was on Zoom on my phone.
Oh, I get it. Believe me, I get it.
So is everything okay now? Are we good to go?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Alright, I'm, I'm all situated too, so there shouldn't be any issues on my end. I'm sorry about that.
No, that, I don't know what's going on here.
It took me a minute to find where I had to go to share the screen. And we now have participants three. And I think we're okay. We just don't have pitches. Alright?
That's fine.
Okay. Now Juliette, you were saying...
Okay. Under the section, Rules of Order Number 8. And there's a section called Debate and then Limits of Debate. It's like page 6.
Six, okay. Limits of Debate.
Okay, there's a section called Debate and Limits of Debate. I want to put in decorum of debate in here.
Okay.
I wanted your guys' opinion. I haven't started, but I think I have to be a little more specific and I don't know how I can share it with you. I don't think I can. I just don't know if you guys want it after debate or be, or after limits of debate. So it'll be a new section F or D.
Okay, you're looking, E, Limits of Debate is, is Section E.
Right.
You're saying that we need to add to Section E?
No, no, not add to Section E. I want decorum in debate as its own section.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if you guys want it before debate or in between debate and limits of debate.
Uh, let's see. You want to put in about a section on decorum?
Correct.
I would put it, I would put it before debate.
Do you agree, Andre?
I agree, absolutely. And I shared, while you were away, I had mentioned we had spoken. And, you know, some of the, the things that you had brought up, we have discussed and so I'm on board.
Okay, so I'm almost done typing it up. I just didn't know which section you guys, you want it before debate, so decorum in debate, then debate, and then limits of debate. Okay.
Okay, now what are we gonna put it as? We're gonna put it as, uh, you want it by itself? You're gonna change all these different D, E, and so forth, or how are you gonna add it?
Yeah. Oh, can I share? Oh. Can you see if I can, can you try to see if I can add a sharing?
Add what?
See if you can let me share.
Now, hold on a second. Let's see, I've got, it says you are screen sharing.
You're sharing your screen with us.
Okay. Says new share. I'm not sure which one would do that. I've got, um, let me try this.
Close out of, what happens if you close out of yours? Or is there a section where you can right-click yours and say, "Close out, share, screen share"?
Want me to close out screen sharing?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, let me see if I can share my screen. Nope. Host disabled it. Okay, I'm just gonna have to email it to you guys. And I can do that right now. But I was putting explanations in because I have some feeling that if we don't explain it clearly, that they're not gonna understand what we're doing.
Yep.
And I know Counselor Heed asked for discipline.
Right.
Within, what is our discipline? We have to think about what the discipline would be.
Well, we had something in here about if somebody, thought we had something in here, but we could ask him to leave. But I guess that's probably the audience.
Dealing with offenses, I know in page 644, 645 on the Robert's Rules.
Yeah.
Um, there's a section that says breaches of order by members in a meeting. If a member commits only a slight breach of order such as addressing another member of the chair in debate, or in a single instance failing to confine his remarks to the merits of the pending question, the chair simply rapslightly points out the fault and advises the member to avoid it.
Okay.
The member can then continue speaking if he or she commits no further breaches. More formal procedures can be used in the case of serious offense as follows, calling a member to order. I, basically, I could put that in. I could type it up and put it in.
Well, you know, I think there must be something because Patrice does that now. If you speak, um, like if you, um...
Speak out of turn?
Yeah. You know, she will reprimand you.
Yeah, but I, I think we might have to... Andre, I don't know if you agree. Wait a minute, I gotta stop doing that because that's also in our Rules of Order. We should be calling ourselves Counselor Aubrey, Counselor Parker, Counselor Baumgartner. Counselor Baumgartner. Should we put that in because it might be better on paper?
You know, we have, we have to have everybody vote on this, correct?
Yes, we do.
I think if we were fortunate enough to get through the changes we've made now, uh, we're gonna be lucky. So, I don't know if I, I don't know if I'd be comfortable to go further as far as how we slap their hands. I mean, right now, when it's done, um, and it is done, because I've had it done to me when it was appropriate. And, um, you know, it's, it really stops you. Or it should.
It should, but I don't think it does.
Well, I don't know. Counselor Baumgartner, what you, what do you think? I think he's eating and letting you make an...
No, I am not. In fact, when I think I'm, I'm speaking, I realize that I'm muted, so I, I really hate using it for my phone. I'm about to switch over from my, to my computer. Um, but, uh, yeah, so I, I tried interjecting a few times, so, um, quickly, Counselor Parker, you had mentioned that you were citing a section. I just, would it be possible if you could cite the section to look at now? Yeah.
It's on, do you have the new Robert's Rules, newly?
I can look it up.
11th edition.
I, I was talking about the section of the rules you wanted to include that these changes in.
Oh, the debate?
Yeah.
It's on page, it's, it's called that, actually.
Page eight?
No, no, no. It's on page 391, decorum in debate.
No, I'm, I'm talking about in the, our rules, our, in the proposed, did, um, in, in which section you would want to put, include this.
Oh, I don't know. That's the question.
Oh, okay. Alright, so...
We're talking about, oh, oh, wait a minute, can I clarify? I'm sorry. You're talking about, we had the discipline?
Yeah, so you're, you're looking to include like a discipline provision in the rules?
Counselor Heed had sent that to us, so I wasn't sure how to incorporate it. He sent it to us, asking about some type of discipline. Engate cited us the section.
Let me ask you a question. In the Robert's Rules, what does it say there for discipline?
You can call, calling a member to order, naming an offender. Um, for instance, there's a example. Um, the chair has repeatedly directed you to refrain from offensive personal references when speaking in this meeting. Three times the chair has ordered you to be seated and you have nevertheless attempted to continue to speak. If the member obeys, at this point, the matter can be dropped or not, and we keep going. The case may be sufficiently resolved by an apology or withdrawal of the objectionable statement or remarks by the offender. But if not, any member can move to order a penalty, or the chair can first ask what penalty shall be imposed on the member. A motion offered in a case of this kind can propose, for example, that the offender be required to make an apology, that he be censored, censured, yes, censured, that he be, he or she be required to leave the meeting during the remainder of the meeting or until he's prepared to apologize, that his rights of membership, well, you can't suspend him. Or that he be expelled from an organization. That we don't do. So they can be asked to leave the meeting or apologize to everyone. If, if they're asked to leave, um, they should be allowed to present their defense briefly first. A motion to require the member's departure during consideration of the penalty, which may be assumed by the chair if he or she thinks is appropriate, is undebatable, is unamendable, and requires a majority vote.
So I, so I get, I do get worried about putting in, you know, especially considering, you know, we are a council again of all Democrats. Um, and so that, I think that in itself is unique because most, you know, most communities either have some, you know, it's evenly split. Um, or, you know, they have Republicans or other minor parties because of the minority representation statue. Um, that obviously doesn't apply in Grand, you know, our, because of our town charter. Um, and but, and so we are all duly elected by the public, but I, I think that in itself should be enough to respect our rules. So I do worry about, you know, depending on who the mayor be or the makeup of the council, how that rule would be applied. Um, but I, I do think, you know, there should absolutely be in our rules, very strong language about proper decorum, about respect. Um, you know, I, I think in, um, in, I, not to put you both on the spot, but I think you both have the unique ability on the council, especially in moments of, of high, you know, high intensity, you know, great intensity and emotion, um, to bring back the conversation to the issues, to acknowledge that we're all here to work together for the good of the town and to put the personal ego aside. And I thank you for that and I, you know, and I, that's why I'm, you know, so privileged to serve with you on the Rules Committee because I think, you know, that, that leadership and, and, and experience is so important. Um, but with that being said, you know, I, I, I think I would say I'm falls probably somewhere in the middle of, you know, recognizing that we should have strong language in our rules to talk about proper decorum, but also do, should we get in the business of censoring members and, you know, you just don't want to kind of add fuel to the fire, if that makes sense.
I think, I think if we add strong language for the decorum, uh, and then at the end of it, we could say something like if, if an inappropriate situation continues, uh, Robert's Rules would be used as a direct...
I agree, I, I agree. And actually, maybe reference or, or I think in some cases of our new, our proposed revised rules, we mentioned the latest edition of, I think that's the first section, right? Um, anything not even mentioned, you know, in, explicitly in the rules, we would fall back on the latest edition of the Robert Rule, the latest revised edition. Um, and so we can always fall back on that, that if there's nothing explicitly written, we can fall back on what is codified, you know, what, what is contained in the Robert's Rules. Um, but I still think what we have now is, if it's not sufficient, we need to strengthen that language so that we make it clear to members, if there are issues of decorum, we're going to revert to Robert's Rules and censor you.
Alright, wait a minute. Say that line again so I can put that at the bottom of the decorum?
Oh gosh, I didn't, I didn't think I was eloquent at all, so I don't know if you want to do that.
I think Leanne said it clearly. Say that again, Leanne, if?
If, if, oh, what's the word I use? If the structure, say something like if the structure of the meeting cannot be obtained, revert to Robert's Rules for censure.
Or revise to the latest edition of the revised Robert's Rules, right?
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright, if the structure of the meeting cannot?
Be obtained.
Be obtained. Okay.
Then reference Robert's Rules for censure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then it doesn't really put us in the spot. Robert's Rules.
Right.
Latest addition. Latest revised addition.
Right.
For censure. I like that.
Me too.
That way, we're not saying you guys got to do this or that. It's either, it actually ends up being, I think it ends up being the chair that has to decide that.
Right.
So, I like that. And I will, well, we got time. We're actually doing really well tonight, guys. And I wish I could hear you.
I'm gonna push back on that. I think we usually do pretty good. So I know we've been taking our time. But we, this committee, I must say, I, I always have a good time on this committee, so.
Well, this is one of the beautiful ones we have.
And it's easier when you can actually work with the people you're serving with, so that... And it's easier when you can actually work with the people you're serving with, so that, for what it's worth.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's working very well. So I'm, I'm typing these up. I'm not typing, tapping up the minutes yet. I will type up the rest of it. And are we okay with the changes that we've implemented? There's a couple of things I did change and unhighlighted. Because we couldn't, there's a couple of things we couldn't change.
I'm, I read it over several times, and I, I think we're fine with what we have noted as changes.
Except for under rules five, C, we have to take that, leave that in there, the mayor. I had to un-highlight that. I'll. I'll type, um, a note on the side to say I un-highlighted the yellow section.
Okay.
Um, cause it's per the charter, we can't change that one.
Is this, which one's five C?
Five C was, uh, mayor shall have the authority to make a motion, may declare any motion duly second, except motions made by him or her. And may speak from the chair upon any debatable pending question.
Oh, yeah, you know, I thought we threw that one out, out the door at the, one of the previous meetings.
But we did, but I didn't un-highlight it.
Oh, okay.
So I'm un-highlighting that one to keep it in. And the, the, page two. Of, in exceptional circumstances. Are we still under review for that one?
Age two?
It's a decorum and vote, num- rule number four.
Let's see. In, in exceptional circumstances?
Yeah.
I didn't know, you know, I thought sixty minutes was kinda long to wait, to tell you the truth. I thought a half an hour would be reasonable.
I agree.
I agree. And if that person can't make it after half an hour, they, they, somebody normally contacts and says, I can't make it anyway. Alright, so change it to thirty?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm gonna under. Okay, I'm gonna make that, that. I'm gonna highlight that so people know we changed it. It's gonna be red and yellow. And that's gonna be thirty minutes. Yeah, that makes sense.
Oh, okay, um, so I, you know me jumping ahead always.
Wait a minute, are we on the same side, same thing, or no?
Yes, we, we are. I was reading it, and then I got a little carried away and started reading ahead, and the little light bulb went off, so I'm gonna let you finish.
No, go ahead. If it, if it's, if we're not changing it, then let me know.
So, uh, I, cause, alright, so I'll, I'll say this first, ten, it'll take me ten seconds. Um, I think if we could, we have about twenty minutes. I think we could probably fly through the yellow. Do you guys wanna try, try voting something out tonight?
No.
Okay, alright.
Well, because I wanna make sure I get the changes to you guys tonight. If we have to do another meeting, then I, uh, if everybody's free. Just don't do it on next Tuesday. I gotta drop Leah off at school.
Okay, like I do a special meeting just to approve it?
Yeah.
We could do that. Ask for just a special shot meeting to just go over it one more time before we put it in.
Absolutely.
Cause. Yeah.
Nope, yeah, no, you're, you're, that's fine by me. So what I, I, I went ahead, I, I'm, I'm good with five. Um, so rule four. Eight, uh, rule four, C.
Okay, so that's thirty minutes. Hold on, let me, uh, fix that real quick. In the. So don't, uh, recess should not be no more than sixty minutes, okay? Why, alright. Oh, I did it right, okay. I'm good with that, okay.
Counselor, you, Boom, Boom Gardner, what did you go forward to? You said that you started reading?
Rule, rule five F. I think that is where, so question for staff of our chairman pro temp. Um, I, you know, I think, you know, given, I don't think we've had a meeting that Patrice has ever missed. Um, she has perfect attendance. I'd hate to be her student, you know, cause, uh. I, I, I would love it, cause I'm, I'm a history nerd, but I, I know, you know, uh, I, sometimes I, I deviate from the rules a little bit, and I know she would, she would. She wouldn't miss a beat and call me out, so, uh, but nonetheless, uh, uh, rule five F. I think that would be a great location if we wanted to add, uh, or, uh, you know, section, if we wanted to include the language on the decorum. And then citing the Roberts rules, I think that'd be a great place to slide in, right after, uh, where it says the mayor shall. Shall have the right to vote on any matter or any other council. I'm sorry, wrong, wrong section. In the case of any disturbance or disorderly conduct within the meeting hall. The mayor or chairman pro temp shall have the power to order persons causing such disturbance. Okay, so these are more about mayoral powers, so I guess that would be more of the power of, you know, the whole council, so maybe that doesn't apply. But, uh, okay, that's fine. So I, I'm fine with that, so we don't, we don't have to make any changes.
Alright, I'm, I'm gonna un-highlight it, so if you notice that they're un-highlighted, that means we're good with the changes.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, oh, we gotta switch our, I don't know how our. Cal meetings are different from the town council meetings. They, I think they should be the same way of going into them, cause if you, I don't know if you guys noticed it too. That once time, we got the roll call, declare a quorum, call to order, which is town council's special meeting. The committee, the whole goes call to order, roll call. I, I, I really think we should keep, do the same thing we're, we're doing, cause we can't really declare a quorum or have a meeting if we're not all there at the meeting. I think the committee, the whole should be the same format as the.
In terms of the order of business?
Order of, like the roll call, declare a quorum, and then call it to order.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Cause the, looking at tonight's meeting, it goes call, town ca- the committee, the whole, call to order, roll call. We don't have a quorum. What if we don't have a quorum? We can't declare a quorum for it.
Yeah, yep.
I think that's the reason why we.
Yeah, but if they do the roll call and there's not enough there, then they're gonna say that they can't have a meeting.
Well, we need a majority, don't we?
Well, yes, but sometimes majorities are different depending on, and I don't know what that is, but I have. Oh, I see what you're talking about. With different meetings, they have different, uh, rules for what is a majority, right?
I think committee, the whole's the same as town council, isn't it?
No, it should be. I'm sorry, we're off on a question now that I'm not really, um, not really.
I, I was looking at section. Rule, uh, order of business and the agenda.
Yeah, I saw where you made the change.
I think we wanted to call, to call the meeting to order, then do a roll call, and then declare a quorum.
Yeah.
Cause.
Call to order, roll call, declare quorum. Yep, that's, I think that's appropriate.
Okay.
Cause you gotta have, you gotta bring it to order first, period.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So.
What, I wonder though, if you call it to order, are you?
You're announcing the meetings, get ready to start.
Okay, okay.
At least that's my point of view of it. I don't know if anybody thinks that, yeah.
I, I'm not really, I just, no, call to order.
Cause how can you do a roll call without saying, okay, we're starting the meeting?
Right.
Calling the meeting to order, or.
Alright.
And roll call.
Yep.
Okay. It's so hot.
We gotta, don't you have air conditioning?
Not upstairs.
Oh. I think we, are you gonna leave the changes in red?
Yes.
Okay. Alright.
The only, the only thing I.
I, and, you know, the thing is, we gotta, my, like myself, I've gotta read this several times, cause I gotta be ready to defend it, cause I know that there'll be. People that won't like the changes.
And, and, and not for nothing, but we're all in this together, and I, I will share this during the council meeting, but. You know, this, that, we vetted it through this through a very public process. We've held all of our meetings publicly. We vetted the language publicly, and there, I can't tell you, I, I know there are several councils who pass rules before the council has even. Taken their, you know, taken their seats, and they approve their rules their first meeting, because they've done it behind closed doors. And so I, you know, we, we've, we've talked about this again in a public manner. Um, you know, we, we've had discussions about this privately, you know, as I've indicated, but nothing, we've, we've vetted the issues in a public manner. Uh, in a very transparent manner, so I think that, that, that in itself should be celebrated.
Right.
Um, and, and we all have come, you know, there are things we all had, came into this, seeing things differently, and we all came out of this, I think. Largely eye to eye on, on things, and I think each of us are all very different people anyway. Um, and, and, you know, the mayor was very smart to, again, appoint people with different perspectives, but. I, in the end, I think we'll have a better product because of it, and I, I'd be shocked if, if this, these rules didn't. I'd be disappointed, I should say, if they didn't get out through by the council unanimously.
Well, we'll find out in the near future.
Um, but in terms of the language, I'm, I am fine with the red. Um, I, I, I think the only thing we should. Talk about though is where there was sort of a, a parentheses and a question, where it says review, add language regarding speaking through mayor. Um, is that something we still need to do?
Let me see.
Or is the language we have there sufficient?
Which one, which one are you speaking about? I'm sorry.
So, I'm sorry, precedence of motions, C two, during a debate. In discussion of a motion, the ma- the, the ma- oath, it should be the maker of a motion on the floor. At any time, may interrupt a speaker to withdraw his or her motion from the floor. The motion is immediately deemed withdrawn upon request from the mover and consent, uh, a mover and consent of the council.
Hold on one second, let me go back to that page.
Yeah. That's, that's C, right, for two?
Yeah, okay, debating, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Precedence of motions, okay, say it again.
Um, so, eh, during, during a debate and discussion of a motion, the maker of a motion on the floor. Anytime they interrupt a speaker to withdraw his or her motion from the floor. So basically, if there is a favorable motion and it's, you know, if there, there's clear the motion needs to be pulled because, you know, it's, it's like a friendly amendment or. You know, it's happened actually so lo- several times over the last few months.
Yes.
Um, and then, then they can say, you know what, to make it better, to save discussion, so we don't have to wait for everyone to speak. I'm pulling my motion, so we can just move forward with business. Um, it just streamlines things, so we can just move forward, cause sometimes we do the round robin, have to wait, and then the person finally can say, okay, well, after. All this debate, I'm pulling my motion when they could've done it maybe twenty minutes earlier.
Right.
Um, so, but again, that is the only section where explicitly mentioned, you can kinda, you can, uh, in, intrude into the, or. You know, in the meeting, say, hey, timeout, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking through you, the mayor, but I'm just acknowledging, I'm pulling the motion. And I, I, I don't think the mayor would take issue with that. It saves her a lot of time and frustration.
Yeah.
Interesting enough, because debate, when the quorum debate, you're supposed to be addressing the, the chair. All remarks are supposed to be going through the chair.
Correct, correct.
Right.
So, we do have that in there, so, um, actually, I'm gonna.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna move this up like we talked about, and I'm gonna move it to D. Instead, like you guys said, before debate, correct?
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, I feel better about that. And if I have ti- uh, I'll finish this tonight while we're actually probably gonna be doing it while we're at the meeting tonight anyways.
Okay.
Well, you didn't say that.
Well, you don't have to do that, you know, cause we're gonna have another quick meeting.
Yeah, I agree.
Future, so, don't, don't try to do it during the meeting, you know. That would be, uh, asking a little too much.
And, and, and lastly, uh, in terms of the, so I'm good with the, all the red, the highlighted. Um, the only other thing, eh, would be public safety, or to dissolve, since it is reconstituted, just, um. Sort of taking away that deleted and just leaving it there.
Yep.
And then, other than that, I, I think we're golden. Um, and then it, see, so rule fourteen, anything on decorum, that's where it goes. Um, the last section, uh, rule, last rule in the rules, page ten. And, uh, nothing further for me.
Conduct by tongue, oh, you want the decorum to go there?
Yeah, right after, so it says, uh, no councilor may speak or give the impression that he or she speaks on behalf of the council without council authorization to do so. So maybe that could be, um, A, and then B, decor- like decorum, um, the, cause it's like about conduct.
Well, decorum and debate is different.
Oh. Uh, decorum and debate, that's rule.
That should be on the rules, order number eight.
Yeah.
Rules of order number eight.
Cause that's the one that's gonna be the new D.
Right.
Oh, I'm gonna, it's not under discussion, I'm gonna say.
We were gonna put it in between, um, presence of motion, and then during discussion or debate. You were gonna put, put it in there.
Yes.
Okay, so maybe afterward says, D two, debate, any councilor who desires to speak shall address the chair. And upon recogni- recognition by the presiding officer shall confine themselves to the questions under debate, avoid injecting a personal note into debate. Or alluding to improper motives of members at the risk of being ruled out of order. And maybe the second part is, if that, if they don't follow that, then they risk being censored, and then it reverts back to Roberts rules.
Okay.
And so then there would be a new section three, and then, I'm sorry, there would be a new, uh, D three. And then what is currently three and four, become four and five.
Okay, wait a minute, let me tell you what I thought about for decorum.
Alright, not, yeah, yeah.
Okay, decorum debate.
I'm all ears.
Sorry, I just, I. From Roberts rules, because I really think we need to be very blunt.
Absolutely.
As confining remarks to the merits of the pending question, refraining from attacking a member's motive. Addressing all remarks through the chair, avoiding the use of member's name. Refraining from speaking adversely on a prior action not pending. Refraining from speaking against one's own motion. Reading report, reading from reports, quotations, et cetera, only without objection or with permission. Being seated during an interruption, uh, being seated during, what's it say? Hold that thought. Being seated during an inter- an interruption by the chair. So in other words, if the chair says something. If the chair makes a ruling or gives information, any member who's speaking should be seated. Or, you know, I guess be quiet in a way, until the presiding officer has finished, so then the member can speak afterwards.
So that's what you wanna put in for decorum?
Oh, and the last one is refraining from disturbing the assembly, or the, I don't wanna say, it's, well, it says assembly, but I didn't know if we wanna say council me, or meeting.
I think meeting.
Okay, but I want to put all ten in there, because I don't think we've all read Roberts rules. And at least this will give us a general idea of, okay, we have to step back and say, oh, are we doing something wrong according to the rules? And. I, I might help, I don't know if it's too harsh, but it's in Roberts rules. I took it directly from Roberts rules.
No, I don't, I, I think it's fine to put it in just as you just read it. Counselor from Gardner?
I'm, I'm all yours. I, uh, yes, I, that, that works for me. That works for me.
And I, this is what I'm gonna email you guys after the meeting tonight, or tomorrow. I can do it tomorrow.
Did you, did you hear, was I muted again?
No, no, you said something about the Roberts rules and the, the, if, well, the, the quorum.
Yes, and, and you answered if I, I was okay with the language, and I, I said absolutely.
Yes, I got that part, but the.
Okay.
My question to everybody was, if the structure of the meeting that Leanne said, if the structure of the meeting cannot be obtained, then ref- reference Roberts rules. Roberts rules latest revised edition for censure, where do you want to put that at? Roberts rules latest revised edition for censure, where do you want to put that at?
Oh, um, so this would be, so this would be the new section D, D, D three. And what is currently proposes section three and four would become section four and five, so it would go after section two. Uh, D two. So it says, any counselor who, no, under debate.
Oh, okay. All right, so it'll be the new what number, I'm sorry?
It would be D, uh, D debate, so three. And where, where it says, where, what is currently section three and four becomes section four and five.
Okay.
So there would be a new section three.
Okay, so just to give you a heads up, that section D is gonna become section E now, because I put the decorum first.
Okay.
So what, what I'm seeing is, I'm seeing, so there's, so for. For.
Yes, it was currently, it was what you were saying, but remember, I just added that whole decorum section in, so it bumped everybody down one.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's why I got confused for a minute, if the structure, I'm putting that in right now, of the meeting. And not be obtained. Then reference Roberts rules. Latest revised addition for censure, sense, sense, I can't say that word. Okay, it's in.
All right.
And we'll go, are we going back to five minutes for debate? You want three still or five?
I want three.
Yeah, definitely three.
And you, and y'all better call me out when I, uh, when I go above it too, so. Or else I, or I expect to be censored, ladies.
One for you.
I, I try to, I try to do that. Try to do that.
I think we better call this meeting, so we can get into the next one.
And, and for, you know, for the purposes of the public, I, again, um, through you, Madam Chair. Uh, it's been a privilege working with you both on this, I've, um, just hearing from other counselors, it, it seems like they've been happy with. You know, our work, just from following us, uh, and, uh, you know, just look forward to advocating for these rules changes, I don't think there's anything. Controversial, over the top, they've been discussed, vetted in the public, I mean, but vetted, you know, in our committee, and, uh. You know, I, I look forward to supporting these, these changes at a committee, and then, you know, in, in the council as well.
Thank you, this was good, this was good.
Absolutely.
Now we just gotta sell it.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, uh, can I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, we have voted, and our meeting is over at six thirty-four.
Thank you, I'll see you shortly.
See you. Bye-bye.
Bye.